Father, as we continue to look at your word this afternoon, we will mindful again that it's you that is the one that speaks to us through your word. Your word which is powerful, it achieves all that for which you purpose it. Some of your word today will bring growth and some of your word today will be stored up in our hearts to be released at another day. So we thank you for your word, pray you bless it to us now in Jesus' name, amen. I seem to have lost some of our audience. I hope it's not something we said there, brother. Right, go, excuse me. Turn in your bibles a little bit further down the road to Luke's Gospel, chapter eight. And I'm carrying on with a similar theme to what I spoke about this morning. It's a bit of an extension and I'm gonna be elaborating on this section. So Luke's Gospel, chapter eight, verse 26. Let me read, I'm reading from the NIV version. Now Jesus just before this had got into the boat with his disciples and he had said to his disciples, "Let's cross over to the other side." And Jesus falls asleep. And the storm comes down on the lake. And Jesus is happy, resting, relaxed, and hears the storm. And his disciples are terrified and they cry out, "Save us." And Jesus rebukes the wind and the water. And choop, like see the sea has come. And he says to his disciples, "Where is your faith?" And just after this immediately now, he's now landing on the other side. And that's where we pick up this story. So they sailed to the region of the Gerasenses, which is across the lake from Galilee. When Jesus stepped ashore, he was met by a demon-possessed man from the town. For a long time, this man had not worn clothes or lived in a house, but he'd lived in tombs. And when he saw Jesus, he cried out and fell at his feet, shouting at the top of his voice,[180.40][180.72]"What do you want with me, Jesus, son of the most high God? I beg you, don't torture me." For Jesus had commanded the impure spirit to come out of the man. Many times it had seized him, and though he was chained in hand and foot and kept under guard, he broke those chains and had been driven by the demons into solitary places. And Jesus asked him, "What is your name?" "Legion," he replied, "because many demons had gone into him and they begged Jesus repeatedly not to order them into the abyss." A large herd of pigs was feeding on the hillside and the demons begged Jesus to let him go into the pigs and he gave them permission. And when the demons came out of the man, they went into the pigs and the herd rushed down the steep bank into the lake and was drowned. When those tending the sheep saw what had happened, they ran off and reported this in the town and the countryside. And the people went out to see what had happened. And when they came to Jesus, they found the man from whom the demons had gone out, sitting at Jesus' feet, dressed and in his right mind, and they were afraid. Those who had seen it told the people how the demon-possessed man had been cured. Then all the people of the region of the Gerasenses asked Jesus, "Leave them because they will come overcome with fear." So he got into the boat and left. The man from whom the demons had gone out begged to go with him, but Jesus sent him away, saying, "Return home and tell how much God has done for you." So the man went away and told all over town how much Jesus had done for him. So now we've seen this story, Jesus crosses over to the other side. Now this area is opposite Galilee and it's generally, at that time, a Gentile area. You'll see that just because of fact that there's this herd of pigs, something that the Jews should not be involved with. Now this word demon is also interesting because it's not normally a word in those days associated to the dark side. It was sometimes just because of a supernatural event. But it's, in this case, it's all about demonic. Now there's three things here, there's three things here. The first is this, that demons cause violent reactions. We see that in this passage that we've read. This man was violent. He was so strong through the demons that he would break chains, that he would be able to do that, living amongst the tombs. The second thing we notice about this demonic activity is this. In Luke 13 and verse 11, it says, "And a woman who was there had been crippled by a spirit for eighteen years." Note, crippled by a spirit. This is an impure spirit and she has been crippled by this. So we see violent reaction, we see bodily disease. There's one more for you, rebellion against God. This is really what the demonic are doing. In Revelation 16 and verse 14, it says in there, "They are demonic spirits that perform signs and they go out to the kings of the whole world to gather them for battle on the great day of God Almighty." So we see, this is typical demon activity. Violent reactions, bodily diseases and issues, and rebellion against God. Now it's also interesting that Matthew talks about two demon-possessed men while Mark and Luke don't. And it's thought that the reason for that is that they are addressing a prominent one of the two rather than, you know, talking about one. So just note that there is a slight difference in the three different gospels. Sorry, I've got some water on my page back there. So let's go on. Then I want you to look at verse 28. "When Jesus saw this..." Well, sorry, "when he saw Jesus, he cried out and fell at his feet, shouting at the top of his voice, 'What do you want with me, Jesus, son of the most high God? I beg you, don't torture me.'" Now this word, "son of the most high God", is often a title used again by the Gentiles. And also, we'll see that in Luke 4:34. We'll see there where they say, "Go away, what do you want with us? Jesus of Nazareth, have you come to destroy us?" It's the demons again. "I know who you are, the Holy One of God." And so this also in Acts 16 and verse 17. "She followed Paul and the rest of us shouting, 'These men are servants of the most high God.'" So we see here, just in this piece of the scriptures here, that demonic is totally knowing who Jesus is. And that's why they declare it and they can shout these things out. And so they have a fear, the demons have a fear. And this is it. In James 2 and verse 19, it says, "You believe there is one God, good; even the demons believe that, and shudder." So they themselves, they know, they know, there's a problem here. They know what their end is going to be, they do. They know that their time is coming when their time will be up. They know that they will face judgment. They also know this, that their time isn't yet finished. That will happen at the end. So, sorry, excuse me, looking a little bit at demonic activity here. Now let's go back to that passage, verse 29. "Jesus had commanded these impure spirits to come out of the man." So this man is under the direct influence of these demonic demons. You may remember how in the story of Samson, when he was, many times, Delilah would tie him up and many times he would just simply snap whatever she tied him up, it didn't matter, until the day she cut his hair. Then he couldn't break anything. The Spirit, Holy Spirit, had left him. So we see even in Samson, there's this, this activity of spirits, the demonic and the Holy Spirit. And they give power, as you see in this passage. Now this man, he doesn't quite tell us how or why he's influenced by these demons, but he is. Now these, it's interesting that when Luke is writing this, this passage, he has in mind what we spoke about earlier on, from Isaiah. Remember, we read from Isaiah 61, I'll read it again for you, from verse 1 to 2. "The year of the Lord's favor, the spirit of the sovereign Lord is on me, because the Lord has appointed me to proclaim good news to the poor; he has sent me to bind up the broken-hearted." Now listen to this, "to proclaim freedom for captives, release from darkness for the prisoners." Do you think, and this is a question I'm posing for you, do you think that the whole purpose of Jesus traveling in that boat across the lake was because he had a divine appointment with this man? It's possible. Because what happened on the lake? Here comes a storm and threatens to drown in the boat, trying to prevent Jesus from getting to the other side. Because he's on a mission. What's his mission? I believe it's this, he's on his way to deliver this man from the demonic, as we see it here in this passage. So God is fulfilling his promises to his people. Jesus said, "I have come to proclaim freedom for the captives." He's just demonstrating this to his disciples. This is what I'm doing. Because he said, "The evidence speaks for itself", to release these from darkness, all these prisoners. And now, as we look at this, in verse 30, look at verse 30. "And Jesus asked him, 'What is your name?' 'Legion,' he replied, 'because many demons had gone into him.'" Now in the Roman world of that time, legion would often refer to thousands of soldiers. In fact, John MacArthur writes that the following concerning this name legion, he says it's a Latin term, "by then common to Jews and Greeks that defined a military unit of six thousand infantrymen." So if they're calling themselves legion, is this 6,000 demons that he's talking about? Well, we don't know, but it's a lot. And the word used would say, "There are many, many of them." Now, question. What can open the door for oppression or possession by these evil spirits? In this age in which we live, there are many ways that we open the doors for the demonic. Now in this day and age in which we live, drugs. What about Hinduism, which is New Age? Open the door for the demonic. All these practices that we have, we're opening doors for the demonic. That's how it goes on. The demonic is prohibited. In the Old Testament, in Deuteronomy, chapter 18 and verse 10, it says this, "Let no one be found among you who practices..." Sorry, "who sacrifices their son or daughter in the fire, who practices divination or sorcery, interprets omens, engages in witchcraft, casts spells, who is a medium, a spiritist, or who consults the dead." Anyone who does these things is detestable to the Lord because of these many detestable practices, the Lord your God will drive these nations out before you. That's the Old Testament. Do you think it's in the New? Let's have a look. In Galatians 5, go there. Galatians 5 from verse 19. "The acts of the flesh, the flesh, are obvious." Here we go, are you watching this list? Sexual immorality, impurity, debauchery. Have you seen any of that around you? Idolatry, witchcraft, hatred, discord, jealousy, fits of rage, selfish ambition, dissensions, factions. Paul says, "These are the acts of the flesh. These are the things forbidden in the Old Testament." So what is it saying to us? God forbids these activities. They are opening doors for the demonic. Now the believers in Ephesus, when they found out about the witchcraft, what did they do? Acts 19:19. "A number, the number who practiced sorcery, brought all their scrolls together and burned them publicly. They confessed, 'This witchcraft is wrong,' and burnt them." We spoke earlier on about how do we go through this process? How do we deal with this demonic? Number one, we confess. We confess, that's what these people in, in this story in Acts was doing. They confessed their sins, they came, they bought their box, they burnt them. They cast them out, they closed the door. We need to understand that we have to go through these steps. You have to confess before God. What happens when you confess? He is faithful and good, and what's he going to do? Forgive us. We have to come to him. If we're involved in all these things, if we have open doors, we need to confess it. We need to come to him and we need to cast it out. We need to throw it out, the door, and we need to close the door. We need to close the door to these demons. Now, it's also interesting, and I, as I looked at this, it is interesting that the demons have to ask permission. They have to ask permission from God. You all know the story of Job, right? What happened there? Who came to present him before God? Satan. And what did he say? "Have you seen your servant Job? Take away that hedge around him and what's he gonna do? He's gonna curse you." What did God say? "Okay, you go and take away the hedge and guess what? You may not touch his life." God is still supremely in charge. And even a demonic, as it shows us here, Jesus had to give them permission to leave and go into the pigs. And they cried out, "Don't torture us, don't do this to us." And he gives them permission to go into the pigs. So we see four things here. Number one, they needed permission before they could enter the pigs. Number two is the second thing we notice here. Jesus has full authority over the demonic world. So if you're ever involved in anything of a deliverance ministry, know that Jesus has total authority. I was many times been in villages in Zimbabwe and gone about with the ministry. And so often I would see that this person, this is demonic. You can see it in their eyes, you can hear it in their voices. Their voices change, their eyes change, and they often speak in a different voice. And you would go into the hut and you would, you know, they would call us to come and pray for this whoever was sick or whatever. And you come into the hut and you look at this person and you go, "This is demonic." The other day in my church, some time ago, I was in the church and one of the elders came, says, "Come, come, come quickly, come and help us. We gotta, we gotta pray, we gotta pray for this woman, she's out for a prayer." She was manifesting in the back, in one of the back rooms. They didn't know what to do. They were praying and, you know, whatever was going on. And I walked in and I looked at this lot and I thought, "This is demonic." So I cast out the demon from her. There's sexual immorality. That was the door the demon had used to get into her life. And she manifested there, right in the church. We prayed for her, we cast out the demon, it left her. But we didn't stop there. Because you know what happens when the demons are chased out? There's an empty space, isn't there? And what often happens if there's an empty space and the house is clean? They come back with seven more demons, worse than the first. And so we had to lead it to Christ, so that the Holy Spirit would fill our heart, so that the demonic wouldn't return. Now, so Jesus has got total authority. So when you pray, when you see somebody manifesting and you cast it or command it to come out in the name of Jesus, it has to listen in the name of Jesus. What happens if you don't say in the name of Jesus? They're gonna punch you. They're gonna kick you and bite you. The only authority you have is in the name of Jesus. You know, one of the things that frustrate me to no end, and I hear it so often in British churches, is people pray, blah, 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 amen. Whose authority are they praying in? In their own? You think they're going to, their prayers will be heard? We can only ask in the name of Jesus. That's why when you pray, you say your prayers, you bring your petitions before God and you say, "In the name of Jesus", and of course amen is only an agreement. I hear too many times. And so when people pray and they go, "Amen", I go, "In the name of Jesus!" And they go, "Who's that?" The third one. Demons will always look to occupy a body. They will always look to occupy. They are spirits and they need to work through people. And so in this case, they were working through this demon, this man. And I don't know what all the, what he'd been up to, but you know, to have so many demonic demons running around, yo, I don't know. Luke 11:24. "When the unspirit, unclean spirit goes out of a man, it passes through waterless places, seeking rest, not finding any; it says, 'I return to my house where I came from.'" Make sure, if you are praying for people, that they get filled with the Holy Spirit, that that door is shut. And the fourth one that we see here, we see that the true intentions of demons is nothing but to destroy. That's it. That is their sole purpose. They want to take as many people with them into the pit of hell. And that's why they do what they do. Now, here we live in this day and age, in the United Kingdom, and it's also true in America, and it's starting to become true in Africa, where we are removing God from everything. Are we allowed to pray in churches, in schools? No? Yes? No? Undecided? Are we allowed to pray in schools, in public, to lead a school in prayer? No, you're not. Could we do it earlier on, in the 60s and the 70s? Yes. You know what they did in America when they banned prayer in school? You know who came in? The Satan. They removed God, who comes in? Satan, thank you very much. What's happening in our school system? What are they teaching our children? To be familiar with sexual perversion. Is that of God? No, not at all. It's not of God. You see, we have, in the same way we have the Holy Trinity, Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. We have the unholy trinity in the demonic world, the dark world. Now, from all your readings of the scriptures, you'll be familiar with the demon Baal. Now he is a powerful anti-God Baal. He will always set up an anti-worship against God. He will always give a false God to worship, to people. And as we have chased away God from our public spaces, we've removed God, who's going to come in? Baal comes in. And so he's returning into our world. When Jesus came, when the church was born, and as the church grew and spread across the world, and as we took the gospel around the world, we chased these demons out. But now guess what we're doing? We're chasing God out. So who's coming back? Back come the demons. Have any of you noticed the bull? Have any of you seen a bull, symbols at, at sports events? Have you? So what did you see at the Olympics opening? Was there a symbol of a bull there? That's Baal worship. Manchester, they had a big bull up there. All these things. And so Baal is one of the returning anti-God demons. He falls the spaces where we drive God out. But there's another one, and it's a feminine one, Ashereth. Ashereth comes as well. Now she is the demon, the principality of sexual immorality. What have we seen around us? The debauchery, the immorality is off the charts. Off the charts. We have men and men and the world goes, yay! They even have children by surrogate women. So they have a male-dominated family or a woman-dominated. Well, how did God make the family? Male and female produces children, that's the family. And so what's the perversion that we're living with? Bring in, bring in the perversion. Our children are taught at schools, this is normal. Our children are taught at schools, this is how you have sex with a man. This is how you have sex with a woman. It's normal. That's what they're doing. And what are we doing? What are we doing? Look what's happening around us. How the whole move towards homosexuality and immorality of, of gender confusion is becoming the norm. Thank God lately, there's been a kickback against that. But I don't know for how long. There's one more God. There's one more God. And I'm not talking about God, I'm talking about the Spirit. And his name is Moloch. You've all heard of Moloch? You've read about him in the scriptures? And he is the God of? Anybody? Child sacrifice. What do we do? What are we doing? Every year, we are aborting thousands upon thousands of children. Thousands. Millions, in fact. Every year. Do you know what it is? It's child sacrifice. Why? Because it's life. Because it's life. And we are choosing, because of our vanity, to kill a baby's life. When does the life start? It starts at conception. What does Simon, what does Asyma say to us in 139? "When we were in the hidden place, God saw us." We were formed in the hidden place, we were formed. We became a human being in the womb. It didn't happen, a baby doesn't become a human being when it's born. It's already nine months old human being. And we're taking it and we're killing it. And in America, they are pushing for full-term termination of pregnancies. That is outright murder. And yet, we say, "It's okay." Where is the voice of the church? Why are we not opposing abortion like we should? Why are we not opposing this gender confusion? Or the moving of Baal into our schools and into our society? You see, when we chase God out, the demons come. And that's what's happened. And so, when Jesus drives these demons out, they have to occupy something. And so they say, "Can we go into the pigs?" And of course, because they're demons, they do nothing but destroy, they destroy the whole herd of pigs. But I want now to move to this, the reaction of the people. There they are, they're seeing all of this. They see this man in his right mind. He's now wearing clothes, fully dressed, sitting and listening and learning, and he's, he's been restored to his family. What, how do the, how does the town respond? This is an odd, I think this is an odd reaction. But it's not. In verse 37, "Then all the people of the region, of the Gadarensans, asked Jesus to leave." And listen to this, "because they were overcome with fear." What were they fearing? They were fearing God. They were fearing the presence of a holy man, Jesus. And they wanted nothing to do with him, they wanted him out. So we see, at the start, this man is in torment, right? Where does he end? He ends up being reunited, back to sanity. He starts off breaking chains, he ends up with having his bondages of darkness broken. He starts being naked and wretched, he ends up being clothed and with the righteousness of Christ. What a testimony, what a testimony! Of God working in the life of this man. I'm trying to go fast because I've got too many notes here. So what do we do about this? Let's go to the application. What do we do about this? What scares people? My question, what scares people? I've just told you, it's the presence of God. It scares them. Even the demons tremble at the presence of God. That's what the Bible said. But you know what's happening? We are becoming so familiar with the deeds of darkness that we accept it as the normal. We accept it as the normal. Who have you, I don't know, if you watch television? My wife and I talk about this often, and I talk about this with my daughter as well. We, we often talk about this. You watch any BBC programme today, any BBC programme. Every single programme, even innocent quiz shows, they will always have, in every programme, gays, transgender, et cetera. You watch, watch every programme, they're there. What are they doing? They're telling us it's normal, that's what they're trying to do. They're trying to tell you, "This is what we do, this is normal, you must accept this." It's not, it's not. William Bennett wrote a book a few years ago, and the book, "The Death of Outrage." "So the time when society showed outrage at people's conduct, but no more. We accept the flaws of others so easily that we accept their misconduct without hesitation. It is not that we forgive these people, we simply excuse their behaviour. In the words of our Old Testament lesson, we have forgotten how to blush. We have no shame, we have no shame." What happens when people have no sense of shame? Hitler's Germany. It wasn't just Hitler and his Third Reich, it was the people of Germany. They got used to his language and they accepted it as normal. What happened? More than six million Jews were murdered. Not just Jews, but others as well. Who knows anything about Jeffrey Dahmer? Does anybody know Jeffrey, about the story of Jeffrey Dahmer at all? So way back, you know about him, way back, quite a long time ago. He murdered seventeen boys, men and boys, seventeen. He ate some of them, body parts. Where did this perversion that he ended up in come from? It came from a broken family. He saw a broken family when he was a youngster, and he saw abuse in the family. And guess what? He saw it as normal, that he could abuse people. And he selected mostly men and boys. He would find men and boys that were isolated in society, often gay and on the verge, and often black men as well. And he would pick them out, and he would befriend them, and he would take them, and he would murder them. How did that start? Back here. Accepting as normal. You've heard about all the school killings that have gone on in America. Children have grown up living with violence. What is happening in our city? What is happening in our cities? What is the highest crime rate at the moment? It is murder by using knives. You see, what happens when people have no sense of shame? The result is, we do drugs. The result is premarital sex, engaging in shoplifting. Have you seen how shoplifting has taken off? Where people are saying, "Well, it's happening and there's nothing we can do about it." It's off the charts! One guy was telling us, we were watching a programme last night, my daughter and I, and this guy was telling us, but he was in a shop, he went into a shop, and you could see that the shopkeeper was stressed, he's a pastor in America. And you could see that this, this woman was very stressed out. But she kept, you know, looking over there all the time. And so he, he sort of maneuvered himself so that he would be between the woman and who she's looking at. And he would say, "What's the problem?" And she would say, and she was trying to show him, there were shoplifters behind him stealing. So he said, "What can you do about it?" "Nothing." "Why don't you complain?" He says that it's come down from the top that we shouldn't react. Can you, you hear what I'm saying? We, we, we say it's normal, it's not. What happens when we have no sense of shame? The result is moral decline of our country. Total, total moral decay in our world. So, the second thing that we notice out of this passage is we become comfortable with evil. We become comfortable. We have no shame, as I've said already. We now live with the LGBTQ plus crowd as if it's normal. Our radio and our television programmes are pushing it out all the time. They are telling our children in the schools, "This is normal, it is not normal." So we accept this rubbish, this behaviour in our community. And why? What's the problem? Yes, we are removing God, but there's something else that we are also doing. There's something else that we're also doing. And that's my third point. The missing ingredient is you and me. You and me. You see, we're not acting like Christians anymore. We know that today, that swearing is like its normal language. You cannot watch a single TV programme after nine o'clock and it's not filled with faulty language. You cannot watch a movie anymore and it's gonna be filled with faulty language. Other day, I was out and about, and I heard a man swearing, in using the Lord's name in vain. And he said Jesus Christ, but in a swear way. And when he said that, I said, "He is Lord!" The man, "What?" He didn't even realise that name of Jesus was blasphemy, that what he was saying. He didn't even know. And when I challenged him, his eyes are like this. I can tell you now that when he wants to say that word, he knows now, that is the name of Jesus, Son of God. We need to be doing that. We need to be challenging these so-called norms in our society. When they start swearing on television, change the channel. I almost don't watch movies anymore because I can't find any that hasn't got swearing in it. It is so difficult. So it's down to Mary Poppins and, you know, what is it? Call them midwives and those kind of programmes. Or watching documentaries, and even that is dangerous. We've become accustomed to this fifth. And our society says it is normal. You see, we accept drug abuse, we accept alcohol abuse, we accept violence, we accept racism, we accept pornography, language. We accept it as the norm. I said to you this morning, pornography is as close as your telephone. That's how easy it is to get it. You see, and I want to read this statement to you. During the years of World War II and the Cold War, there was a word for this appeasement. Appeasement described efforts of peace at any cost and of accepting evil. In 1938, this is a long time ago, Britain and France, still trying to recover from World War I, signed the Munich Pact, which basically said that they would accept Hitler's Germany after the taking over of Czechoslovakia. As long as Germany agreed not to take over any other country, you know, then they will be happy. The policy became known as appeasement, it didn't work. Germany eventually took over Czechoslovakia, a few minutes later, Poland. Appeasement didn't work. What are we doing in our society? We are appeasing the darkness. We're in a spiritual battle, friends, we're in a spiritual battle. And it is not won by appeasement. It is won when you and I stand firm our ground. We're in a spiritual war, we have to stand firm. Do you know what's happening lately? With all the growing Islaman, Islam, I can't even say it, of the Islam invasion of the United Kingdom, what are we doing? Are we doing anything about it? Anybody? No? 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 Why? They are a very small percentage of the population. They're a very large percentage of government. What are they doing? They are determined to take over. They are determined to take over. And what are we doing? No, you mustn't upset them. I live, I live in London, I live in an area of London where my colour skin is not common, where language of English is not spoken. In fact, in my neighbourhood, they say that there are a hundred and three different spoken languages in my area where I live. Every single day, more and more women are wearing full-face coverings with their headscarves. It was the headscarves to start with, then came the face coverings. Now every, almost other women in our area are wearing face covers. We, Natalie and I call our area Islamabad. We live in Islamabad, we could be in Pakistan, in Islamabad. That's what it looks like. I, I, I ask any of you to come and visit me, and you'll see it for yourself. I step outside my church, I am surrounded by Islam. I have a mosque across the road, and, and on the next block, and the next block, and the next block. They just keep on going, they're just growing everywhere. Friday lunchtimes at two o'clock, I can't even walk on the pavement to the bus stop because all the men are on the street with their carpets praying. This is London, United Kingdom. You need to see it for yourself. We are the salt of the earth. Matthew, chapter five, verse 13 to 16. This is what Jesus says to us, those who are called by his name, Christian, it's this, "You are the salt of the earth. But if salt loses its saltiness, how can it be made salty again? It is no longer good for anything except to be thrown out and trampled underfoot." Verse 14, "You are the light of the world. A town built on a hill cannot be hidden, neither do people light a lamp and put it under a bowl. Instead, they put it on a stand and it gives light to everyone in the house. In the same way, let your light shine before others, that they may see your good deeds and glorify your Father in heaven." Note that last verse, "In the same way, let your light shine." Why? That they may see your good deeds. So that the world we're living in may see that we are different. We're not into appeasement, we're into standing for God. As Christians, we are the salt of the earth. But what happens when it loses its saltiness? You chuck it out. What's happening to our churches? What's happening to our churches? They're preaching an alternative gospel for, to appease the alphabet crowd. That's what they're doing. Saints, we need to wake up. We need to wake up. We are the preservative. We are the missing ingredient in our communities. But number five, and I think that's my last point, is this. It takes courage. It takes courage. In one Corinthians, chapter sixteen and verse thirteen, it says there, be on your guard. Stand firm in the faith. Be courageous, be strong. You know, as I said earlier on, we'd forgotten how to blush. We're accepting immoral, immoral conduct. We stay silent instead of speaking out against all this drug abuse, alcohol abuse, against these breakdowns in family, and all this trash on TV, and all the filth on our phones. We need to live the Christian life in our schools, in our marketplace, in our families, and in front of the people. Listen to one Peter two, in verse twelve. Listen to what he says. Live such good lives among who? Pagans. That though they accuse you of doing wrong, they may see your good deeds and glorify God on the day he visits us. You want to do something about all these things that are happening around us? Then take your stand. Now I'm sure most of you know the story of Rosa Parks. For those who are not familiar, Rosa Parks, known for her igniting the civil rights movement in America. Nineteen fifty five. She got onto the white bus and sat in a seat and refused to move as a black woman because of the discrimination laws. And she became known as the hero of the civil rights movement. She's remembered for riding on this bus. And it sparked off a worldwide reaction. How many people did it take to change America's racial discrimination laws? One. One woman, Rosa Parks. That's all it took. Are you willing to take a stand like Rosa Parks did? In your community, in your society, wherever you're at school, wherever you're at work, wherever you're on transport? Are you willing to take a stand like she did? She faced abuse. She faced horrendous attacks on her, but she stood her ground. And today, America is a different place. Turn back in your Bibles with me. Let's go back to our passage in Hebrews twelve. Let's end here. And I want to read it from verse one, and I'll finish on this. Therefore, you must always ask, if you see therefore, why is it therefore? It's because of all the heroes of the faith that are described in chapter eleven. It's because of them. Therefore, since we are surrounded by such a great cloud of witnesses, let us throw off everything that hinders and the sin that so easily entangles. I started off with this and I end with this. Let us throw off the sin that so easily entangles. And let us run with perseverance. Perseverance means to keep on keeping on despite all that you face. The race, the race marked out for you. And then verse two. Let us fix our eyes on Jesus, the Author and Perfector of our faith, who for the joy, note the joy set before him, endured the cross, scorned its shame, and sat down at the right hand of the throne of God. Incredible. What God has done for us. Jesus stood his ground. Rosa Parks stood her ground. Are you ready to stand your ground? Let us pray. Father, we thank you for your word today. Many of us would have heard different parts, maybe not remember all of it. But Lord, it's your word. Plant it in our hearts and help us to grow. We pray for people that will take a stand against the moral filth that we are becoming used to in our society. Help us, we pray, in Jesus's name. Amen.